Good morning, I'll call the meeting, I'll convene the meeting. First item is to swear in the newly elected officials, including the supervisors, all five supervisors, the auditor and the sheriff. Ready when you are, Sheriff. Will you do them individually or all the supervisors together? Or what do you like?
I think we can all do that.
Yeah, all together?
And then I'd like to have a separate picture.
Okay. You bet.
Anyone want to say again and raise their right hand? He'd have to me. I can state your name.
I, Rick Rasmussen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Office of Supervisor.
Of the Office of Supervisor.
In Wright County, Iowa.
In Wright County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, auditor. Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. You want us out of the way?
No, we need to get back.
Look at you.
Yes, like we're actually doing it.
There you go. All right.
Good job.
Anyone else?
No, sir.
Sheriff.
Sure.
Yeah, Ashley wants one.
Ashley, I'll leave your phone.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. I don't want, I gotta not have Biden in the background.
Oh.
No, not. All right. Thanks, Betty. You're welcome.
Ready now?
I, Jason Sweeney, offer.
I, Jason Sweeney, offer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Office of Sheriff.
Of the Office of Sheriff.
In Wright County, Iowa.
In Wright County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
One more.
One more. Oh, I'm sorry.
Huh?
Hi, God.
Hi, Amanda Meyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Officer.
The Office of Auditor.
In Wright County, Iowa.
In Wright County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, next item is to elected chairman and a chairman pro temp for 2025. I would nominate Rick for chairman. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
I voted aye.
I know. Well, don't execute that part.
Okay, and then chairman pro temp for 2025.
I nominate Dean Cluse.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to nominate Dean Cluse for chairman pro temp for 2025. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Approve the, I need approval of the tentative agenda.
Motion, motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Betty, would you read the minutes of the?
You want Betty to?
Excuse me. I'm gonna have a hard time getting you.
It's four years.
Amanda, would you read the minutes of the previous meeting? Sorry about that.
September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Supervisors met as Drainage District Trustees to do the minutes for the drainage meeting. See the drainage district minutes on the county book site. Chairman Pro Temp Cluse called the regular meeting of Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine thirteen a.m. Members present were Cluse and Rass, who are present, is the president, he is the president. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Hope, to approve the tentative agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting were read and approved, approved claims for payment. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse, to approve the amendment to the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center twenty-eight E agreement. This agreement will add an alternate for this T I J D C commission at the Board of Supervisors annual organizational meeting. Motion carries. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, updated the board with the row crew has been out. Oh, that the row crew has been out bleeding and burning, did just been able. Clemens stated that this past year they have been able to complete seven hundred and ninety-two work orders all of all types and hold eighty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-three tons of granular. Tricia Rosendoll gave an annual update on the fair. She updated the board on the flooding of the fairgrounds that took place just days before the start of the fair. Even with the flooding, volunteers and the fair board members were able to get it cleaned up with lots of creativity and placement of vendors, et cetera. Entries were up to one hundred and forty-eight for each and FFA livestock exhibitors and about eighty-three non-lifestock exhibitors. There was just over nine hundred and ten entries in the areas of livestock and non-lifestock exhibits. The fair board is again asking for continued support and will be considered during budget time. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Hope, to approve the meeting, motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they stand approved as read. Okay, set reimbursement mileage rate for twenty twenty-five, it's current of sixty-seven cents and the new federal rate is seventy cents.
Well, we have followed the federal rate ever since I've been on the board. And I think that that's, I think that we should do that. I don't know if there's any other feelings towards that. And I guess I don't know what total dollars we spend on mileage.
I'm not sure. I know that like public health does a lot of mileage. Other than that, there's not, trying to think of any other departments. Uh, Darrell Stephen does mileage. Luggage. That kind of bit. In that. Uh, it is because.
Okay. I will change that to a motion to set the fed, set the mileage rate for Wright County for twenty twenty-five for, uh, to match the federal rate at seventy cents per mile.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you. Set drainage warrant interest currently at six percent.
Uh, states treasures office will have it, but not for this year as well.
But. Motion to match the state rate of six percent for drainage warrants.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second of the current rate of six percent for the drainage warrants. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you. Designate official Wright County employees holidays for twenty twenty-five and you should have that in your packet. They consist of, uh, President's Day for Monday the seventeenth, Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty-sixth, the Fourth of July is Friday on the Fourth, Labor Day, Monday, September first, Veterans Day, Tuesday, November eleventh, Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November twenty-seventh, day after Thanksgiving be Friday, November twenty-eighth, Christmas Day, Thursday, December twenty-fifth, and New Year's Day be Thursday, the first of, uh, twenty twenty-six. I just wonder if we should do, uh, cause Christmas is on a Thursday next year. Do we wanna go a half day off or what do you guys feel? Cause I know this year we did the whole day before off.
Employee handbook designates eight holidays. The President's Day is not one of the eight that is designated in the employee handbook. Um, and so you can, and then the Board of Supervisors picks a day and, um, and then the employee gets a floating holiday. So in all, they get ten holidays.
But that can be adjusted per you guys today.
Yes.
Correct, you change it.
And that's why, that's why I brought it up because Christmas being on a Thursday.
Yeah, I would like to have the whole day off, I think.
Before?
After.
After makes more sense. Yeah, that would have a four-day holiday.
And then also, at that same time, I would like to recognize, um, New Year's as on a Thursday too. And do we wanna set that date different as well? The Friday after New Year's. Open for discussion.
I would, I would leave the New Year's Day the same. I, uh, would agree that, uh, it would be nice to make the day after Christmas a holiday also so that we would have Christmas Day.
And Friday.
And Friday, and then the weekend. Thoughts?
And not do the Friday after a New Year's Day.
And not do the Friday after New Year's Day.
I agree.
That's already ten day consistent.
That would be ten days and then the employee would still get a floating holiday.
Need a motion on changing this if you'd like to do so.
I would make a motion to, uh, add December twenty-sixth, Friday, December twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas, as a holiday for twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay. Authorized petty cash fund for various offices. County auditor, twenty bucks, county engineer, fifty, public health nurses, fifty-five, county sheriff, two hundred, and county treasurer, fifty.
Any reason we need to change any of those? So. Um, motion to leave the, to set the petty, petty, boy, that's easy for me to see.
Petty.
Uh, to set the petty cash amounts, uh, for twenty twenty-five as listed. Uh, Wright County auditor, twenty dollars, Wright County engineer, fifty dollars, public health nurses, fifty-five dollars, county sheriff, two hundred dollars, and the county treasurer, fifty dollars.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, thank you. Appoint an eminent, eminent domain compensation commission for twenty twenty-five. Okay.
These were all, uh, obviously when the pipeline issue was, uh, still being worked on by the Iowa Utility Commission. Um, we contacted everybody on the air and, uh, set them. I have not had anybody come up to me and say that they did not wanna serve on it. So I would make a motion to, uh, leave the eminent domain, um, to appoint the eminent domain commission for twenty twenty-five as listed. Owners and operators of agricultural property would be Stan Watney, Dean Cluse, Larry Pauls, Kent Kirstein, Viral Tate, Bob Dimerly, and Troy Watney. Owners of city and town property would be Shannon Walker, Mitch Cluse, Bud Young, Colleen Bartlett, Larry Clapp, uh, Earl Cockwar, Sandy McGrath, and Darren Baker. Uh, licensed real estate salesman or real estate brokers would be Bob Powers, Rod Brooks, Carol Hop, Austin Charleston, Kevin Reed, Todd Buesman, and Todd Swaling. Uh, bankers, auctioneers, property managers, property appraisers, and persons responsible for making loans on property. In that list would be Mark Scogrobo, Sherry O'Brien, Mike Ryerson, Aaron Wagner, Tate Goman, Gene Ryerson, and Kent Rutherford.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Accept the count of cash held by Wright County Treasurer at the close of the business December thirtieth. Me and Dean did this this morning. Uh, you want me to read all this off?
No, just the totals.
Okay, the.
They're, they're at the bottom where it's all.
Be cash of nine thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents and checks of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and six dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, driver's license cash of fifty dollars, a total of seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and seventy cents.
Motion to accept as counted this morning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You like this fact? Thank you. Okay, we need to make the following appointment for twenty twenty-five. Uh, the courthouse, county farm, drainage, township assignments. And Dean, you've taken care of the, uh.
County farm, yeah. And I'm willing to continue to do that. But it would be nice to have somebody else, uh, on that.
I would be willing.
Okay.
Instead of the board as a whole.
Oh.
I would say that we would be a main people we go to, other than board as a whole, yes.
Yeah, maybe we, we would be better described as the committee, uh, concerning the county farm. But we would, anything that we would.
Yeah.
Do, we would bring it for the board, for the board to vote on.
And as far as the courthouse and jail would probably be the board as a whole.
Yeah. Cause the courthouse actually falls under the auditor, I believe. So, right or not?
But, um, the, the, the board makes final decisions on that.
All right. And then drainage township assignments. Uh. I guess we never really assigned any last time. I mean.
No.
Uh, if it's an area that you're familiar with, I would think that you would go do it.
Can we do it by districts?
Well, if we do that, you're only gonna have, uh, Troy Township. And this, well, the city of Eagle Grove takes care of it.
I'll have Dayton, Woolstock, and Shore.
Oh, would you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have shit.
Oh, Rick wouldn't have anything, that's the one, yeah.
This won't.
And I'm happy with that, cause I've had the whole half, I've had the whole half of the county for twelve years.
Yeah, Lynn would only have Pleasant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of Belmont.
And I would have some of Eagle Grove Township.
Or, uh, one, Iowa, sorry. Um, one number five before, we did one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. One person in the middle got.
Love it. I think that's a great idea.
Think so?
Yeah. Uh, because I, I see, uh, Rick on Liberty Boone in Norway. I see Lynn on Belmont Pleasant in Iowa. I see Betty on Blaine, Vernon, and Wall Lake. I see Ashley on Woolstock, Troy, and Eagle Grove. And I would be willing to take the Lake Grant, Dayton, and Lincoln.
Okay. And then we just help out whenever.
Absolutely. Yeah, in the absence of one of us, uh, if there's a drainage issue, somebody needs to step up and go look at it.
If one of us is out of town or can't get to it.
Right.
Which we've done that before. Okay.
So that would be my motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, and then we go to union negotiations, the board as a whole. Um, department heads. Chairman. You need a motion on all these, Dean, or?
Where do you see that?
This page right here. Well, you know, it's an old one that I got of what it was.
So he's gonna do another, he's, oh, he. Now he's gonna do the rest of the.
Yeah.
Table right there.
Okay, got it.
Okay, we read department heads. Do you want a motion on all these or how do you wanna do it?
I think you go through the list instead of all, and then do the motion.
Okay. Okay, we're at historical preservation. That was Andy Ackel. Regional planning affiliation policy board, Midas, Adam Clemens.
Oh, important that he stays there.
Mid-Iowa Growth Partnership, Darrell Stephen. Midas Economic Development, Darrell Stephen. Midas Cities, be Clint Middleton. Boone River Watershed Management Authority, Dean Cluse.
Yep.
Building Families, Dean Cluse.
Yep.
And Community Family Resources, Dean Cluse.
Yep.
Iowa Drainage District Association, Dean Cluse, Cluse.
Yep, that's my elected position.
Yep, Executive Board of Pathfinders, Strategic Partners County, Dean Cluse.
I don't have any idea what that is. I've never been there. Is that still a thing?
Pathfinders used to be Midas, so I think that, I don't think that.
Oh, it's just a, yeah, 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 yeah. Executive Board, Pathfinders.
I think you can scratch that one.
Yeah.
Are you already, are you already on the Midas one or not?
I serve on the Midas board, but that's one that I'm willing to, uh, allow somebody else to serve on. Or we can mark me down for that and we can see where we end up. And if somebody doesn't have very many, uh, we can approach it that way.
I'll put a question mark.
Okay.
Offered the morning opportunity, that would be enclosed. Would, uh, any of your other new ones like to be the alternate on that?
I think the alternate.
Okay. Local emergency planning, uh, Dean Cluse.
Do you want that one still or?
It doesn't matter to me.
What do you think?
Somebody else's, uh. If Jerika has a meeting, uh, of the commission, you would attend that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you do a, uh, a drill, a casualty drill or something, you would be expected to attend that. We've done that before over at the fairgrounds, uh, simulated, you know, disaster, I guess. Um, and you work through how communications work and, um, so. I'll do that. Okay?
Wright County Emergency Management Commission and E nine-one board. Didn't I just get on that, Dean?
Yes, you did.
I will stay there. As this material response alternate, uh, Jerika's on that. Is that the one it, uh, is that the one down at Fort Dodge?
It is. Yep.
Yeah, and I'm on that as well. On the cheese, the alternate, I'm on that one. I'll stay on it.
Okay.
That's down, tell her.
Yeah, it's down further.
Maybe I should put these enough.
And now I'm lost. My tapework, I've been going off my old one.
So Jerika's the alternate?
Jerika's the alternate.
Okay, and Rick is?
So, yeah, okay, you're fine.
Hang on. Central Iowa Juvenile Detention, Carl was the alternate on that one. I am on that one as well. Uh, who would like to be the alternate? Betty? Thank you. Central Iowa Community Services. You know what that one, I don't even know what that one even added.
C I C S, there, we don't have C I C S anymore. And with, with the new, uh, state behavioral health districts, um, there's only an, I think it's called an advisory board anymore. There is no voting position anymore.
To eliminate it or?
No, I, I think it's important that we still, uh, send somebody to that, but it, it won't be called, uh, I should remember what the name of that is now, what the district is.
What do they do there?
Uh. The main behavioral health, uh, C I C S used to be an eighteen county tier at the top, uh, the north northeast tier of counties. Um, and, and then we, we stopped that and then we went to C S S?
It was C S S first and now.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, the eighteen was C S S. And then it, then we joined C I C S.
Yeah, yeah, she's not.
And now that is being.
The best.
Uh, we will be in Behavioral Health District number two, which consists of, uh, Dickison, Emmett's, Cassuth, Winnebago, Worth, Clay, Palo Alto, Hancock, Pocahontas, Humboldt, Wright, Sat, Calhoun, and Webster.
And basically, they'll be just an advisory. They're not necessarily a.
Correct.
Say on the board, but they can advise. Correct.
I can do that.
Because it is, it is administered by the Association of Iowa Primary Care Organizations.
So then they're just an advisory board?
Yep.
Hey, this is what we.
For that district. Yeah.
And you would take care of that?
Yeah, I can do that one.
Super. Is there still DCAT?
Uh, I know that we got some funds from them this year. Um, and that was one that Carl was on. Um. But I'm not familiar with it.
I'm not either.
Good learning opportunity.
It's every second or third month on a Wednesday. So it's not every month. It's just like every second or third month.
No, it was.
Nose goes. Is that like, um, what kind of a board is that for?
DCAT is, isn't that what the, the children and the dollars, I think?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
A lot of those, a lot of those funds for, from DCAT come to, uh, building families.
Yeah. So it's kind of more for the children and, and raising good, good kids.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, I'll do that one.
Thank you. Second, just show district, uh, correctional services. That I was on and they, the state uh, dissolved us as a board. So, uh, the whole thing has changed. Immense. They used to meet in Webster City, uh, four times a year on a Friday. And what that is, is bringing people that are getting out of prison to get them adjusted to living life amongst the public. Uh, OWI breath lizers go on in vehicles and stuff like that. And right now, I'm just an advisor. They wanted me to stand as, as an advisory board, not cause we cannot longer have a board, but I will stand just as a advisor. because we cannot no longer have a board, but I will stand just as advisory and they just call me when they have a meeting. And basically I have no say in anything, I just help with that if I can. So I'll just stay on that, just to let you know what it is.
This is an alternate, alternate that you're selecting, but you're further down, you have your name down there.
Oh, I do? Okay, well, good.
But you're an alternate.
Uh, and I'd say we don't even need an alternate on that one.
So don't need that one.
No. Wright County board of health Carl was on that, I believe.
Yep, I think Ashley wanted to be on that.
Yes, I can be on that one.
Okay, perfect. Uh, Wright County economic development commission.
Carl was on that one and I stepped into that position.
Okay.
You're staying?
I can.
Wright County sanitary landfill. I was an alternate for it and if somebody would like to take it, they can, it's a, it's pretty interesting board. It's not very long, they do a good job out there, they really take care of business.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, it's not too bad of a meeting, Lynn. Wright County emergency medical services. Uh, what type one consists of, I think.
The EMS, the, the.
I think, I think I'm on that one with, uh, cause I know I've been to meetings with Brian and he's the one's head of that. So I'll stay on that one and I'll also stay on the E nine one one board. Boone River watershed management authority, not you Dean?
I am, this is an alternate.
Who would like to be an alternate on that?
Meet once quarterly, uh, we typically meet at the library, it's from, uh, two in the afternoon until we're always done by four o'clock, couple hour meeting.
I can do that.
Right.
I'll turn it on that, um, the other thing is, is that I am currently the fiscal agent, um, on that and.
Now, would you like to be the lead on it then?
No. And so one of, at one of the meetings I'll have to, uh,
Point.
Find a new find and or ask or beg for a new fiscal agent.
Anticipate us asking you to be the fiscal agent, okay?
Okay.
Okay, the ADA coordinator.
I'll take that one. They've never met.
Okay, Betty. Betty, you got it. Bio-terrorism preparedness, you want that one too? They've never met either.
I would say that that'd be the whole board anyway, I mean, when COVID happened, it was the whole board.
Central Iowa detention center, uh, we've got, we already did that one, didn't we?
You get an alternate, so this one is you, isn't it?
Yes.
And Betty was the alternate. Central Iowa community services and alternate, who's ahead of that one?
That one is the C I C S again.
Yeah.
Ashley is the first one and then an alternate needs to be chosen.
You say we need a first person to handle?
No, I. Ashley is the first.
Okay, who's the alternate?
We need one, we need a pick, choose one.
Don't everybody speak at once?
Well, I can't, so.
I'll sit here all day.
Your, your chair, you can, you can delegate.
Betty, would you like to do that one?
Sure.
Okay.
You already got has to do some material.
Yeah. HIPAA.
How often do they meet?
I don't know that they do meet, the only, the only board I can think of that has to do with HIPAA is, um, the, uh, I think we're called the wellness committee, aren't we?
Public health.
On public health, okay.
Um, I can be.
They meet like once a year, once per year, usually in December, maybe.
I can do that one.
I know that we were, because we get the fitness stuff, uh, I mean, we get a printout of everybody's stuff. We have HIPAA training, when we went to Des Moines, we received HIPAA training.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in order to be able to look at that stuff.
Yeah, so safety.
Okay. So we're putting that as Ashley.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we already did the drainage district.
This one's an alternate.
Uh, I would recommend Courtney for that.
Okay.
Uh, J T P A regional workforce, that's another board that I was on. That the state took away from us and we no longer are a part of it.
So cross that off.
Yeah. And that was a board you did not wanna be on, cause you. Okay, second, didn't we do this one already?
Yeah.
Yep, that's you.
U G M O we've done?
No, no, we're done.
You didn't? I'm on U G M O, I'm president of it right now for the next two years.
Okay, Rick.
Yeah.
Uh.
Difference between the, that county advisory and then the upper Des Moines, the next one down, the next post two.
Are they the same thing?
Upper Des Moines, they are the same, they're both the same thing. Them two. Wright County safety committee and wellness, who's on that now, are you?
No.
I'm on, I'm on the wellness committee and the safety committee also, no, Rick is.
Yeah, I'm the reason they write safety rules.
Maybe we should keep it that way, just in case.
Uh, yeah, I don't, somebody else wants to take it, that's fine.
You meet monthly?
It varies.
Yeah. Kind of when we did, we tried to meet this.
For safety.
Yeah.
Wellness just meets three times, four times a year.
Four times a year we have to meet.
Well, this is.
And I am on that, I'm, Dean will remain on the wellness committee.
Okay.
Uh, Lynn, would you like to take the safety committee?
I'll take on the safety.
Wright County security.
Got the landfill.
Yeah, landfill alternate.
Landfill.
No, excuse me, Wright County, who wants to be the alternate of that?
I can do that.
Wright County security.
I don't know what that is.
I don't either, yes?
Okay, so there was a, uh, basically the safety committee at the state level that included the courtroom. Stan used to be on it when we had to do a safety report, an audit report every year. No, it was.
Rick.
At the court, it was the judge, the resident judge or whoever happened to be here.
It wasn't Judge Albers, who kind of died after.
I can do it.
Okay, home ward report, I am on that one, which is not what it used to be, it all changed hands again too, but it's still there.
Is that?
I, didn't you? Is that?
The housing improvements is now done by Heart of Iowa.
Yeah, so that's a change we had from the, it used to be called home order.
Right.
So now it's called Part of Iowa.
Yeah.
Part of Iowa, isn't it regional?
Heart of Iowa regional housing trust fund.
And, uh, I can say I'm with Darryl, I don't care, somebody else wants to do it, great.
And what do you do there?
Me with Darryl, there's some funds we can get that they can re-go in and redo a house.
Yes.
Or get someone move in a house, it's.
After fifteen thousand, no.
Yeah, it's not a real big, if you like, good, it's not that. What is it, once a year, twice a year?
The regional housing trust fund meets quarterly and, and who represents Wright County right now is Dana, uh, Pastor Dana.
Wonger?
Uh, no, but.
She's the one who lives out on, uh.
Yeah, Church of the Nazarene.
Church of the Nazarene, so he's our, he's our rep for, on the heart of Iowa.
Do you want someone on like I was or not necessary?
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Leave that one open.
Are we gonna put Darryl Stephen down?
Yes, put Darryl Stephen down. Okay, Wright County health officer and illegal dumping enforcement officer Sandy McGrath. Executive board of pathfinders, strategic partners, economic development, Kim Dimerly.
Dimerly, Dimerly.
Or Demery, sorry.
And that's all, change back to Midas again.
Right.
That should be all of them. For Mid Iowa growth. All of them is Kim Dimerly, who's the lead, Demery, whatever.
Did you wanna say?
He's primary.
He's the primary, Darryl Stephen is the primary on that.
Yeah, he's on the, he's on the. The other one that is not on this list is the environmental health, uh, environmental management team. And that is, uh, the person, and they meet annually, um, with the sanitary, sanitarium at Humboldt. And so they have to, you meet annually just to make sure that is the, the agreement together doing okay with the fifty thousand that.
Oh, the Humboldt thing we just did.
Yeah.
Two months ago.
Yeah, so that is, um, they meet annually and, um, but on the twenty eight E agreement, it says that you have to have somebody appointed from each county to this management team.
So who would like to be on that? Me?
You were.
I was, I had idea, cause I did set that up. Uh, would you like me to stay on it?
You have the contact earlier.
Yes, I'll take Garrett.
That was called environmental, what?
Environmental management team.
That's when they put in these fields, so.
Okay, yeah. Did you still?
Wells.
There's a question on the Midas, did you, did you still want that?
Have you thought about it?
I'm, I'm willing to allow you to do that if you'd like to.
I often do those things.
They need once a month, on the, third Wednesday, third Wednesday, uh.
And like through the fourth.
We need it three thirty.
Three thirty.
And we need at the city hall, if it's known to Fort Dodge.
Fort Dodge. Tell you what, why don't I, we leave me on it for now and why don't you attend a meeting or two with me and see what you think?
Not a work.
Okay.
And we'll work this out, uh, not everything is set in stone, if you need someone to take your position, if you're ahead of it, just let them know if you can. And it's not the end of the world if nobody can make the meeting, it happens. Got it?
Perfect. Thank you.
Motion to appoint as discussed.
Second.
All in favor, uh, all ayes, thank you, thank you for taking the position, uh, you three new people. It's not that bad. It's not like it was when I first started, some of these meetings, you'd rather watch paint dry. They were seriously, they were fricking horrid, I mean.
Then COVID hit and they.
Oh.
Every other month.
Yeah, and then, uh, that's when the state took over a bunch of them, which can I say this without getting publicized?
Every month.
Oh, good, the state screws them up, end of story. Okay, drainage attorney currently David Johnson, but we're looking for a new one and we haven't found that one yet, am I not right Dean?
That is correct, let's table that one please.
Appointments to township trustees.
Don't forget this one right down here. There's one right here.
No, that's the township trustee.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be the whole next page.
I just love that.
Okay.
Missed that one.
I need to read all these off. Uh.
Just have two that you need to appoint.
Yeah, uh, Wall Lake Township, uh, I currently serve in that position, but I should not be serving in that position because I don't actually. My residence isn't there. Uh, my farm buildings are there, uh, which I'm out there every day, this mostly the township trustees, at least if you don't have a cemetery, which Wall Lake Township does not have a cemetery. Your biggest, uh, issues is setting the levy rate for the township. Uh, and then attending the rural district fire meeting, so Wall Lake Township is served by Dow's Fire Department, Clarion Fire Department and Woolstock Fire Department. Uh, so you need to attend those annual meetings if you're gonna serve as a trustee for Wall Lake Township. Or at least one of the trustees needs to. Uh, the reason that I've kept my name in there is because everybody that I've asked in the township has said no. Uh, the other two trustees are Brittany Hausen, um, and, uh, the clerk is, um, Emily Cook. Uh, and then Jeremy.
Jerika.
Jeremiah, uh, is the other trustee. The reason, uh, I serve as the secretary on the rural Woolstock Rural Fire Department, each one of those fire departments, when the group meets, they'll have a president, a, a vice president, a secretary and a treasurer to keep the minutes and all that kind of stuff, so. Uh, I'm willing to turn it over, I will continue to.
What about your son?
Uh.
Have you asked him?
I have.
And now, have you told him?
No, I have not. I have not, I will ask him. Oh, I know, I know.
Cause that's the way you get off is you have no longer a pulse.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And the same goes with Woolstock Township.
Well, I think the other Woolstock trustees are, uh, Brian Claude.
Um, Dave Vander, I know.
Yep, and.
Who's the one, uh, the clerk is Cory, is it?
No, her name is, uh, Cory Anderson is a township trustee. He's also the chief of the fire department.
But Cory, because that was a tie, a three-way tie, and then the person who got it lived in town and do it.
Cory lives in town. And he is also the fire chief, the Woolstock fire chief. If you're talking about Cory Anderson.
He didn't turn his paperwork on time to be on the ballot for this election, so. But he lives in town?
He does. He does, well, I assume that that's considered town, it's down past the elevator and out, uh, towards where Steve Boss lives.
That might.
Is that not in town?
Well, I think so.
Okay, so he might not live in town.
Well.
He'll be right on the edge.
Does, does it go all the way to Hancock, doesn't it go all the way to Hancock, does it? The, are you talking Woolstock?
Yes, sir.
So this?
Where does he live Dean?
He lives, uh.
On the blacktop?
No, if you come in on the blacktop from the north and you turn like you were gonna go onto the elevator, uh, to the scale. But instead of going on the scale, if you follow that road around, it will turn to a dirt road.
It's three hundred thirty fifth street, this one here?
Nope, it's not depicted on there.
Oh.
Same.
Anderson.
You guys just can't get up and leave during the meeting, once you're in here, you're in here till the end.
No blame Township, we gotta die to get off.
I think that's the way it's gonna work for me too, right?
See ya.
See ya.
And that's inside city.
It is within the city.
Okay.
So you need to find two people, what you're saying for these districts?
Uh, we need to find one for Wall Lake Township, and we need to find one for Woolstock Township, it looks like to me. And we can do that, we can work on that, this isn't a life and death situation today, it's just something that we need to.
Yeah, I need to make a motion, someone to make a motion to approve the ones that are on.
On the wall, right? When we. All eight, and somebody was, or won the drawing, or not?
No, that was.
That was just only Woolstock.
That was Woolstock, yeah.
Okay, alright. I'll have to look, I, for some reason, I feel like somebody got elected for the wall, like.
I can't remember the lady's name that is the clerk for Woolstock.
Emmy, Emmy Harrison.
Yes. Yep.
Um, okay.
Okay, moving on. Oh, did we?
Nope, not yet, still looking for one.
To appoint, uh, the trustees. As depicted on the list that you've read. And then Grant Township also, there was a, a vacancy for John's, and John Campbell's gonna take that within term to expire in twenty twenty six. All of these other ones' terms will expire in twenty twenty.
Well, second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't look me in that, don't, Dean, all eyes.
And then Woll Lake and Woolstock is tabled.
Yes. Official newspaper, uh, we right now have the Wright County Monitor, Eagle Grove Eagle, and the Belmont Independent.
The Auditor's Office did receive, uh, from the American, or the Clarion Monitor and the Eagle Grove Eagle. And then I received, uh, uh. An email from Belmont Independent, they stuck it in the mail, we, or it might come today, but with everything else, so then they sent me a text message.
Bless you. Requesting to be?
Yes, they would like to be.
I would make a motion that we appoint, uh, the three papers, the Belmont Independent, the Wright County Monitor, and the Eagle Grove Eagle as the county newspapers. That's where anything legal is published, um, so that we can meet our publication requirements in accordance with Iowa code.
So, the Belmont Independent says, please consider this letter as our, our application to once again, uh, serve as an official newspaper for Wright County in twenty twenty five, thank you.
Go second.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Medical examiners and investigators, it's, uh, every two years appointed. And it is, uh. One of the three people.
Medical examiner is John Aronson, deputy is Andrea McGlaughlin and Dustin Smith, and then we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five. Five appointed, and the ME in Webster County can also come here, we have an agreement with them. Of Western Cities, that'd be Hamilton County.
And it says that we're supposed to do it every two years, however, they changed so much that we just appoint pretty much every year, the Iowa code says everything.
I would make a motion to appoint the medical examiners, to make the medical examiner appointments as listed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes. Appoint member to the Board of Adjustments for the expired term. People on there right now are Shay Hanson, Dave Nelson, Shay Hanson Clarion, Dave Nelson Belmont, Deb Vance Eagle Grove. Elizabeth Stevenson Belmont, Aaron Wagner Eagle Grove, uh.
Reappoint for you again.
Yep, uh, Board of Adjustment works with planning and zoning, anytime somebody wants a variance to, uh, planning and zoning. That has to go in front of the Board of Adjustment.
Just like if your, uh, house property is, you're building something that's gonna be too close than what it's supposed to be, yada, yada, yada. Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Aaron Wagner for, uh, a four-year term to expire twelve thirty one, twenty twenty eight.
Then what about Shay Hanson, he's, oh, in twenty twenty five, I'm sorry. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes. Appoint members to the Wright County Economic Development Commission Board, who's all, I like that right there.
Yeah.
Okay, Economic Development Board, Todd Foss.
He doesn't expire until twenty twenty six, there's only two reappointments.
Now Margaret Warden at Large Dow's, Brad Robinson, Belmont Growth Alliance. And them are the ones to be reappointed, and Gabe Fiskus and Mike Ryerson are still on, uh, till next December.
I would make a motion to appoint, reappoint Margaret Warden and Brad Robson to the Economic Development Board, expiring twenty, uh, twenty seven.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appoint members to the Wright County Charitable Foundation. And then people are. Andy Jones. Uh.
Lynn.
Lynn A. Groom. Kyle Marker. And these need to be, the ones that need to be reappointed for a two-year term. Trish, uh, more, Trish Morris, Kevin Callahan, Dennis Bowman, and Adam Vori.
They were all willing to serve against. I would make a motion to reappoint, uh, Trish Morris, Kevin, uh, Callahan, Dennis Bowman, and Admiral, Adam Vori. A term expiring, to a two-year term expiring twenty twenty six.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes. Okay, appoint member to Board of Health for a three-year term. Right now, there is Andrew Wagner, Angela Warden. Susan Kofte needs to be reappointed, uh, Carl Hell will need to be reappointed, oh, yes, they try doesn't, does he?
No.
Yeah, he's good.
And Doctor Michael McGlaughlin, Clarion, so the only one needing to be reappointed would be Susan Kofte. Uh, I need to call Sandy to see if she's talked to her.
Uh, I hit.
And?
And, and she'll be on.
She'll be on, okay? So we need to.
Most to reappoint, uh, Susan Kofte to the Wright County Health Department Board of Health, for a three-year term expiring twenty twenty seven.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes. Okay, we got numerous resolutions. Do you wanna do these all at once, or one by one? Have to do one by one?
Yep. Does it require a roll call vote?
Okay, we got attendance of meetings, Resolution twenty twenty five dash O one. And you can see there.
Want me to read it?
Sure.
Resolution authorizing attendance at meetings, it is hereby resolved by the Wright County Board of Supervisors that they authorize elective and appointive officials of Wright County to attend all meetings approved by the Executive Committee of the Iowa State Association of Counties. Be it further resolved that clerks and various officers shall be authorized to attend meetings when approved by their governing officer, dated this, uh, second day of January.
That's what allows you to go to any meetings and be covered by your insurance and stuff. Or when you're doing business for the county.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash O one.
Second.
Okay, Betty. How do you vote? Lynn, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ashley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And I will be aye, all eyes. Okay, Resolution twenty twenty five O two, payment of claims prior to board meeting.
So this allows us to go to s- stop from, to prevent, um, having late payment fees and whatnot, uh. Hereby resolved with the Board of Supervisors of Wright County Iowa that pursuant to the provisions of three thirty one point five O six, three thirty one is the home rule thing, that's where you'll find all of the. The different elected officials and how they are to, what their duties are. Uh. Of the Code of Iowa, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following payment without prior approval of the board for fixed charges, including but not limited to freight, express, postage, water, light, telephone service. Or contractual services after a bill is filed with the auditor. Again, those contractual services would have been approved by the board, um, and that's why we do this. For salaries and payrolls, if the compensation has been fixed or approved by the board, the salary or payroll shall be certified by the officer supervisor, under whose direction or supervision the compensation is earned. I would make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash O two.
I'll second. You can have it.
I'll second.
Ashley.
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Betty? Me?
Aye.
All eyes. Resolution twenty twenty five O three, framey, treasure naming depositories.
Oh, it is.
I just don't have.
It's like, uh. First Citizens Bank, Mason City.
About.
Uh, fifteen million.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, cause I don't have, I've got.
First State Bank, Webster City Clarion Office, five million, First State Bank Eagle Grove Clarion Office, five million, First State Bank Belmont. One million five hundred thousand, United Bank and Trust Company in Sheffield, hundred thousand, Green Belt Bank and Trust in Belmont, three million. And Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust in West of mine, ten million.
Any changes that we need to do to that?
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash O three, a resolution naming depositories in the mail.
Second.
Betty? Ashley?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Aye, all eyes. Resolution twenty twenty five dash O four, construction evaluation be the master matrix.
Yes, this resolution allows the supervisors to make comments, uh, on, uh, to have some input. On location of buildings, we don't have the final say, the DNR has the final say, but if we don't have this resolution passed, we do not have any say at all. So that's the purpose behind this. I would make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash O four, the construction evaluation resolution.
Second that.
Lynn?
Aye.
Betty? Dean?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Aye, all eyes. Resolution twenty twenty five. Oh, dash O five, Sheriff naming depositories.
It be resolved with the Board of Supervisors of Wright County Iowa, approve the list of financial institutions. The Wright County Sheriff is hereby authorized to deposit the Wright County funds in amounts not to exceed the maximum approved for the financial institution as set below. That's First Citizens Bank, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that enough, Jason? I would make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash O five.
I'll second.
Ashley?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Betty? Lynn?
Aye.
Aye, all eyes. Resolution twenty twenty five dash O six, Recorder Naming Depository.
Same thing, only for the recorder, uh, again, First Citizens Bank at a hundred thousand dollars. I would make a motion to approve twenty twenty five dash, Resolution twenty twenty five dash O six.
Second.
Betty? Lynn?
Aye.
Aye. Ashley?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
All eyes. Resolution twenty twenty five dash O seven, noxious weed control.
Uh, be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Wright County Iowa that pursuant to the provisions in chapter three seventeen, Code of Iowa, it is hereby ordered. That each owner and each person in the possession or control of land shall cut, burn, or otherwise destroy all noxious weeds thereon as defined in this chapter. At such times in each year and in such manner as shall prevent said weeds from blooming, bearing seed. Or coming to maturity, and shall keep the lands free from such growth of any other weeds. As shall render the streets or highways adjoining said land unsafe for public traffic. Uh, noxious weeds shall be cut, burned, or otherwise destroyed on or before the following dates. And as often thereafter as necessary to prevent the seed production, then you can see the list of, uh, seeds, um, or plants, I should say. Um, and basically what this allows is for our weed commissioner, who is, uh.
Eric Cracker.
Eric Cracker, who is the Conservation Department head, um, to be able to go out and, and address that issue. And last year, not last year, the year prior, we did, uh, he did utilize this. So I would make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash O seven, Weed Control Resolution.
I'll second.
Betty? Lynn?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Aye, all eyes. Anything else before the board? Like to welcome the three of you.
Thank you.
And you need help with, we'll help you.
You guys gonna start talking about setting, uh, timeline for budget reviews? Set, set dates for that yet, or has that been?
Yeah, it wasn't on our listing here, no.
Just to have the camera take you.
So the dates.
What are you thinking?
The January fifteenth and sixteenth, we have a new officer's school, so we can't do it then. Um.
Yeah, that's old, Andy's got one on order for me.
And then, uh, January thirtieth. Do you guys have anything else that you have that's scheduled? So those are the dates that we have to avoid.
I mean, we can do it the week of the twentieth.
Two or three days if we need it.
And I mean. When you come back, Amanda?
I, I'll, I can be here, or I'll call in or zoom in or something.
Can we do it before then?
Yeah.
Can we do it like?
How many days do we usually have to?
A day and a half only, isn't it, Betty?
I think we spread it out to two days.
Two days.
Yeah.
Not sure.
It might depend on how much.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to do it the thirteenth and fourteenth. Um, because I'm, if the compensation board meets. Uh, on the fourteenth, then we're here already.
Okay.
How much you wanted to do it, if, Amanda has to have time to put numbers together also.
Okay.
Prior to.
Does the thirteenth or fourteenth work for you, Amanda? I'd say that we should start it then, rather than later.
Budget.
So, uh, we'll start budget meetings, uh. Any idea what the agenda looks like for the thirteenth?
I do not have that, so.
For fun, I don't think there's anything I'm gonna do for the thirteenth yet.
Good. Trying to remember if that was already draining, I think it is informational meeting for DD thirty six lateral.
Yes, I think it's correct.
So that's at nine o'clock.
Okay. So immediately following that, yeah, good start. We should all be here for that meeting at night, well, we have our.
It's a Monday.
Yeah, it's a Monday.
So do that on the thirteenth and the fourteenth.
Will you have, uh. Books like?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we'll have to, yeah, we'll get them done.
Okay, alright. And then do we need to do anything with the department heads to tell them?
Yeah.
Get you this information, but?
Yeah.
Okay. 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 Alright.
So far, there's just one department that has not submitted their budget.
Good.
And that we're waiting on, um.
So what time on Tuesday do we wanna start?
Um. Eight thirty or nine, give it nine.
Aye.
Okay. Somebody newie?
Mm-hmm.
Any else for the board?
Hope. Meeting on the sixth, Monday, the sixth. Be back here in a few short days.
I am.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes.